That's better, right? Why are y'all... Yeah, he's so...
I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting of Rocky Mountain City Council on April 14th. It's currently six fifty-eight. This time, I would like for everyone to please stand and observe a moment of prayer. Good sign. Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask City Court, please call the roll.
Mr. Mayor Knight?
Here.
Blackwell?
Here.
Joyner?
Here.
TJ Walker?
Here.
Dolphrey?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Doris Walker?
Here.
Good forum. This time, I'd like for us to consider item number four, which is consideration of the minutes of the rescheduled meeting of the whole meeting, which was held on October fourteenth of twenty twenty-four. We discussed Fair Box Bid, AD Compt Strategic Plan, Third Quarter Crime Statistics, Douglas Block Leases, and the capital projects updated. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? So, motion made by Councilman Joyner is their second, by Councilman Javaris Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. Alright, minutes are approved. Next item is consideration of the minutes of the special call today of the whole meeting, which was held on October twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-four, which we discussed. Mark three, Stop Loss, Restaurant Catalysts, Perishable Loan Program, Cities for Financial Empowerment Update, Ed Service Line Inventory Project, Disposal of Surprised Field Hammond Street. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? So, will... Motion made by Councilman TJ Walker is their second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tom Harris. Any need for discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. Alright, matter has been approved. This time, there's consideration of additions and deletions to the agenda. I've made aware that we have a personnel matter that we want to discuss at the end of the meeting, and I believe we'll call that item... Item sixteen, it appears. So, is there any other additions and or deletions to the... or to the agenda as we see it tonight? Part with that, I'll need a motion to actually approve the personnel matter called item sixteen. Motion made by Councilman... Lush Dorfres, second by Councilman Richard Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. Okay, this time, I will turn the matter... the meeting over to our city manager, Leader Phil Clark.
I have several things to update on, Mr. Mayor. First, there's a spring litter sweep. Spring litter sweep is underway now through April twenty-sixth. So, if you are a member of the group who'd like to help with the cleanup of our city, you could go to the website, fill out a form, and what that will do is put you in touch with Keep America Beautiful coordinator who would reach out to you. She has supplies like bags and gloves and things to help with the cleanup. Next, the Human Beliefs Department will host a Fair Housing Forum on Thursday, April seventeenth, from six to eight thirty, at the Booker T Theater. So, if you'd like to RSVP on that, you can call the number. Hint appears on the screen or scan QR code that's on the screen. Easter holiday is coming up, and in observance of Easter, city facilities will be closed on Friday, April the eighteenth. Bar River Transit will not operate on Friday, the eighteenth, but the Imperial Center for the Arts and Sciences will be closed on Sunday, April the twentieth. Garbage recycling and yard waste will be collected on a normal schedule. The Easter Extravaganza will be held on Saturday, April the nineteenth, from noon until three o'clock at Sunset Park, and the first hunt begins at twelve thirty. Groups and hunt time will be listed on the screen. For a long time, we've been talking about developing a trail that we refer to as the Monk Mill Trail. This would connect Rocky Mountain Mills to Colonia's Monk Park. We'll hold a public meeting, open house, on Wednesday, April twenty-third, from five thirty to seven. Looking for input for the community to develop a trail design that will reflect the community's character and heritage, and that provides greater connectivity between neighborhoods and businesses along and along the trail corridor. In recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month, the Rocky Mountain Police Department will host an awareness event, Golden Small, on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, noon to three o'clock. The event will feature guest speakers, and the distribution of vegetables and materials to the public. The goal is to raise awareness and promote prevention efforts in our community. And the last thing is, we have solicited bids for two properties that the city owns, eight eleven and eight fifteen Hammond Street. And we have a lot of lookers and look takers, and so we are going to be advertising for bids. Again, bids are due May the twelfth at two o'clock, and hopefully we'll be able to accomplish a sale this time.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Does anybody have any questions or comments from Mr. Martin on this report? Okay, seeing on... On to item number seven, which is petitions being received from the public. This is an opportunity for public comment. We thank you for coming to the city council meeting tonight and sharing your views, and we value all citizen input. Speaker comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes during the public comment period, and at conclusion of those three minutes, each speaker shall have leave the podium. Comments must be directed to the full board and not to individual board members or staff members. Although the board is interested in your comments, speakers should not expect any comments, action, or deliberation from the board on any issue raised during the public comment period. At the board's discretion, they may refer issues to the appropriate city officials or staff for further investigation. If an organized group is present to speak on a comment issue, please designate one person to present the group's comment, which shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Bush to answer to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to stand here in support of OIC. I've said so many times that OIC is Rocky Mountain. I've been working over here for thirty-eight years, but I've been coming to Rocky Mountain longer than that as, like Philip Payton, I'm working at Rocky Mountain, W A D P, serve on the Edge Home County Democratic Party Executive Committee and a precinct chair in the northeastern... Eastern North Carolina, civic group, which consists of twenty-three counties. Like I said, I've been working over here for thirty-eight years. Used to play ball at the OIC meat store. Yeah, good. But again, I just want to thank OIC for all they have done and all they will do. And again, I stand how would I say, Rocky Mountain. OIC is Rocky Mountain. They helped so many people. And if they have not touched anybody, it's because they just haven't been down to be touched. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Anthony Richardson to the podium.
Good evening, everybody, everyone. I'm here to just let the council know and manager of the city of America about I have put in a request of being annexed into Dorches. Alan Chester, I've been talking to him and speaking to him. He told me I need to come before you even mention it with the council. I even talked to Mr. Dorches about it. And the reason is because it's been about three years. I couldn't find anyone who actually would do me a site plan for my property at seven one three seven Hunter Hill Road. And Dorches, Town of Dorches, would allow me to come in and be able to build without a site plan. I just needed to draw on paper and present it before them. But Mr. Chester had told me I need to mention before the council, before he go and present his big work before the House about being annexed, and which I went to the the meeting with the Town of Dorches. They seemed to be okay. I got to meet up with planning board on that. But I'm here just to mention that that's what my plans is. So, I don't know if you have anything you need to comment about or look into for that point.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. What I would suggest is that maybe you connect with Mr. El Daniels, maybe just go over the plan. Am I assuming that you currently reside within the city of Rocky Mountain?
Yes, I'm...
And so what you're really asking is for de-annexation from the city of Rocky Mountain, with permission to be able to be annexed by the Town of Dorches?
Yeah, because a few years ago, I had a rezon or not commercial ability business on it, and so I'm looking at...
And just to be clear, so the reason is, you don't like the way we're zoning or the way we are...
No, it's just, it's taken me this long to try to get someone to do a site plan, and no one wants to, since I'm living on a property, no one wants to touch a small project like that. And so Dorches is saying I don't have to have all of this, and so that is the reason why. It's not Rocky Mountain itself. It's just I can't move forward with my business.
So, again, I think what I'll suggest is that you connect with Mr. Daniels. This is going to be a little bit more of an involved process than just, you know, appearing tonight. I do appreciate you showing and giving us an indication of what your desire is, and we can figure out what mechanics that need to look like, and in a way, the city council can review the map.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. I'd like to invite Alice Davis to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Alice Davis. I reside at two eleven Madison Street. Tonight, I'm here to petition the property next door to me, which is two fifteen Madison Street. The house is currently vacant. It's under probate. A lot of legal matters is taking place on that particular property. However, there is two abandoned cars on the property, fencing that is almost to the ground, and it's in disrepair, which I consider dilapidated. I've contacted code enforcement, and they have been trying to work with the person who is on paper the owner of the property, but legally she is not. They cannot correspond with her because of her attitude, and I just don't know what to do at this particular time. I have talked to the owner, one owner of the vehicle, and he said that he had permission to put the car there, and he indicated that Edge Home County would never look at that. The other owner of the vehicle, the second vehicle, he's currently incarcerated during fair time. So, we know we can't correspond with him. Code enforcement has informed me that being that the cars are covered, there is nothing that they can do about it. But when I looked at the code, it say abandoned. And I don't care if someone have given you permission, abandoned is abandoned. And someone, he said, they couldn't do anything about the fencing simply because it wasn't completely on the ground. I don't understand why we have a code and nobody is following it. This is why Edge Home County, I hate to say it, looks the way it look. I am calling on our city councilmen to look into this issue, especially Councilman Blackwell, who is the councilman for board too. I had some chickens. I have recently got rid of them. I disced some of the... they run, and I put debris on the side of Road Street. This particular individual, just this Saturday, came and called the debris to my front yard. She said Road Street was her property, and it wasn't on her property. The police know her quite well, and I'm not trying to bring family matters to the city. I just want the cars and the property fixed up. And it appears to me that Mr. Cook has no intentions of talking to me. I've called him on numerous occasions and asked to meet with him. As I sit here today, he has not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I have your contact information here, and I'll ask city staff if they will follow up.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to invite Ms. Melanie Richardson to the podium.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Afternoon.
I personally came here... I personally came here to thank Reverend Joyner. Reverend Joyner responded to the eleven hundred block of Branch Street where the eleven-year-old was found dead. And he stayed with us the entire time while the family went through. And I came on behalf of the family to tell you thank you so much. You being there just showed who you truly are. And so we just really want to tell you we love you, and we really appreciate that you stayed with us to the bitter end. It was a hard time, and the family is still going through, but you made a difference, and I wanted you to personally know that you really made a difference. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We will continue to support the family. Thank you, Kenneth. This time, the very side number eight, which is the consent agenda. I'd like to receive a motion to accept the consent agenda as written, and that will provide consent. Read all this, a few items tonight. Approve the tax releases, the bond ordinances, and resolutions as written. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute leases on behalf of the city. Approve grant agreement. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and execute the same. The other supporting documents on behalf of the city. Approve amendment and supplement agreement. Approve master plan. Authorize mayor and city clerk to execute banking resolution on behalf of the city. Resign BD twenty twenty-five thirteen. Approve minutes as recommended, and approve amendment to the farm lease, and authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city. Is there a motion? A little. Motion made by Councilman Joyner is their second.
Second.
Second made by Councilman Tom Harris. Is there a... I'm sorry, was that Councilman Javaris Walker? You know, we got new technology tonight, okay? My defense, and Tom beat you to the button, I suppose. But again, second by Councilman Javaris Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. Okay, that brings us to item number nine, which is the public hearing devoted to the downtown major development grant for two twenty-four Rose Street Memorial Hospital for five hundred thousand dollars. We will be receiving public comment. Before we do, I'd just like to point out that Councilman Knight and Councilman Blackwell have recused themselves and have signed, and that is on file, see, right now, because of their affiliation with the OIC. With that, what I'll do is I'll put the podium to anyone who wishes to speak on this particular matter. So, anyone here from the public who wishes to speak regarding the OIC proposed project, and, well, I should say, the grant from the city of Rocky Mountain.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Susan Perry Cole. I'm a resident of the city of Rocky Mountain. I live across the street from the building known today as the former Memorial Hospital located at two twenty-four Rose Street. I speak this evening to offer support for a vote by the city council to approve OIC's request for a downtown major investment incentive award of five hundred thousand dollars to completely remodel this historic building. Downtown Rocky Mountain is at a pivotal moment, experiencing gradual momentum and growth. To boost such growing demand, the city has introduced incentive programs aimed at business attraction and expansion. OIC's proposed renovation of Memorial Hospital is wholly aligned with the purpose of the incentive grant program, which is economic development-related, or to encourage reinvestment in the rehabilitation and adaptive use of older buildings located in the downtown transitional area boundary. Through wise deployment of this strategic investment and creation of workable public-private partnerships, Rocky Mountain aims to proactively cultivate a thriving environment for developers and business owners. Significantly, I understand OIC intends to bring to the table over eight million dollars in funding toward the cost of construction and site preparation for the building's remodeling. Clearly, a capital analysis of post-construction tax valuation, then-proposed tax and utility revenue oversight in ten-year period would no doubt show an estimated return on the proposed city's investment. With such a forward-thinking investment approach, Rocky Mountain is in a position to demonstrate its intent to build a vibrant, business-ready downtown. OIC is planning to remodel the building to provide behavioral integrative health services on the first floor. With this adaptive use, OIC is honoring an essential chapter of Rocky Mountain and the building's past while creating a healthcare provider space that meets today's needs. Behavioral health focuses on a range of habits that can affect overall physical and mental well-being. Many people today, especially in my neighborhood, are struggling with issues that fall under the behavioral health category. So, OIC's proposed renovation project tells a story that bridges heritage and medical progress. As a longtime resident of the underserved neighborhood where this proposed investment... where this investment is proposed, I'm most excited by the broad community support undergoing this critical renovation project. There is hunger for substantial investment in my community. OIC's proposed project represents a potential win-win for the city and my neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to present these comments tonight.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Okay. Dr. Kuhn will continue next.
Hi, Gary. My name is Alice Davis. I live down the street from the potential OIC site. I would be happy to see that site come into the neighborhood, and this is some of the things that I have been wishing for and hoping that the city would invest in. I support any funding that the city can help them to get a project up and running. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kuhn?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Kuhn, and I live in Rocky Mountain. I would like to speak in favor of OIC's application for the downtown major development grant of five hundred thousand dollars. As I understand from reading the documents, OIC plans to renovate the building to use both as a behavioral and mental health clinic as well as a workforce housing, workforce training center. Two two four Rose Street was the former memorial hospital providing much-needed care to the community, but closed down in twenty fifteen and fell into disrepair. It seems that the building was solid enough to withstand the last ten years of disuse, and thus renovating it and putting it to use for public good is an endeavor we all should support. The chaotic economics of the current regime have upended us and the global community. It has increased the political isolation of this country and delegitimized the American rule of law and order. While this country reigned under vast brutality and imperialist aggression on the rest of the world, Mr. Trump had increased military spending to one trillion dollars. Meanwhile, our people are suffering sky-high inflation as prices of goods and services soar, a mountain of crushing debt as wages... A mountain of crushing debt as wages cannot cover living expenses and homelessness and despair fill the streets. Drug abuse, crime and self-harm are common day occurrences as folks cannot find solutions to their problem while an uncaring government fools around with its ever-changing mercurial policies. The tomfoolery of the newly created Department of Government Efficiency or DOGE had cut major funding, welfare funding, and thrown many previously stably stably employed federal workers into the unemployment rolls. Even while many protested industries' much-needed services from for behavioral and mental health clinics can mitigate some suffering and forestall self-harm. The workforce training programs provide enjoyable skills for many and preparation for possible industries looking for looking to relocate to Rocky Mountain. Not only that, the new O I C-run clinic will be providing forty-five new jobs to this area. The proposal by O I C to renovate the former Memorial Hospital starts an urgent move benefiting benefiting all of us living in this city as well as bringing additional income to the previous four hun- four thousand eight hundred referrals for mental health services to Raleigh and elsewhere, which can be treated here. Therefore, I hope council and its wisdom will support this endeavor wholeheartedly and approve this grant with blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public here uh wish you speak this or please?
Hi, my name is Lainey O'Harry, proud citizen of Rocky Mountain. Good evening, everyone. A rapid day in full support for the Road Street campus, not just as a place, but as for a vision of hope, healing and holistic community care. Road Street is more than brick and mortar. It represents a commitment to meeting people where they are and walking with them towards a better tomorrow. Whether it's providing behavioral health services, job training, or simply taking a safe place to reset and rebuild. Road Street stands as a bold investment in our community, especially those who have been left behind for far too long. We know the challenges our community faces, but we also know how to capacity to overcome them. We are when we are resourced, when we are united, when we lead with purpose, Road Street is part of that leadership. Let's stand behind it, let's fund it, let's grow it. Because with no support for Road Street, we're not just building a center, we're building a future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public here wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor.
Spain.
Council members, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to support a request for a grant by O I C to remodel an old building produced as a behavioral and integrative health and workforce training center in an underserved area of Rocky Mountain. We are facing a national crisis of massive budget cuts across various government departments. An international tariff war, threats of recession with potential for an uptick in poverty, homelessness and increasing diseases of despair, which predictably have spawned numerous smoke and vaping shots around Rocky Mountain. This in the face of brutal cuts in funding disease prevention and food safety by the Department of Human and Health and Human Services, effectively shifting funding of health services to the states. Thus, O I C's requ- request for a for this grant is very timely and critical for addressing unequal health access for a community long accustomed to being ignored. The grant is much needed and will address multiple issues: health coverage, job training, and community revitalization. For your information, while traditional medicine adopts an organ-by-organ approach, so you have a heart disease or a liver disease or a pain in your knee, behavioral and integrative health honors the whole person, taking into consideration mind, body and soul. Every aspect of a patient's life is explored. Most importantly, his environment, his home life, workplace and stress levels, all of which affect behavioral and mental health. B I H addresses obesity, diabetes, nutrition, exercise, smoking cessation, to name a few services involving many professional disciplines. This proposed project reduces long-term costs by addressing root causes of chronic illnesses rather than costly emergency interventions. Additionally, workforce training creates a pool of skilled labor force, attracting employers and boosting local tax revenue. A thriving downtown always benefits everyone. We know that the quality of society is measured by the health and productivity of its citizens. Budget cuts disproportionately harm neglected communities, deepening divides that causes all socially and economically. This project offers a balanced path, fiscal prudence, paired with moral courage. So please, please demonstrate your compassion and empathy and vote for this grant so we can have all the essential services about a Rocky Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak on this particular matter? Is anybody here uh on behalf of the project maybe to speak on the specifics of it, just to give us an overview? I know that we've received a lot of that, there's committee, the whole, but it might be helpful.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and audience members. Uh my name is Tyrone Holt. I'm one of the two lawyers that have been engaged by O I C as developing a construction council on this project. Uh next slide. O I C has put together a team of professionals to move the project forward and we have at this point completed all of our due diligence on the project and are moving forward with the project design. Uh the next slide, please. Uh as you know, O I C is a member of the community and has been for many years, has a number of locations, is actively serving the community at this time. And O I C is contributing once again to historic Rocky Mountain and to the future of Rocky Mountain with this project. Next slide, please. The project itself will cost roughly fourteen million dollars. We're working on developing a capital stack for that project now and making great progress. It will create a number of ongoing impacts for the city of Rocky Mountain in terms of tax incentives going forward. And will take this part of the city and really create it as a jumpstart for what will ultimately be a health and wellness path that will start with the community college and move to the Rocky Mountain Events Center, which is another project that previously Rocky Mountain supported. Next slide, please. This project will provide forty-five new jobs at Rocky Mountain at the O S D. Thirty of those jobs will be in the uh health and wellness area and fifteen of those jobs will be in the workforce development area going forward. Some of those jobs in the uh occupational health area will be very high-paying jobs and will bring professionals to Rocky Mountain and active Rocky Mountain community. This is uh the Road Street project, which is what's mentioned by some audience members earlier, uh has been referred to as Memorial Hospital. It goes back to nineteen thirty-seven and has the honor of being on the National Historic Regency. It is our desire to retain the facade and the historic nature of this project while creating an interior that is modern, technologically advanced and will serve the majority of the ten counties around it. Uh next, please. This is what the project looks like now. Uh we as part of our due diligence, we really concluded that it is not only desirable but necessary to completely remodel and rehabilitate the project, including the civil and site work under the project. Next slide. This is what the interior of the project looks like right now. Uh next slide, please. It has asbestos mold and lead paint, uh has unacceptable soil conditions, there's an underground storage tank there. Uh and it will require that we completely remediate remediate the site, the underground, the tank and the building itself. Next slide, please. Uh this is what the site plan will look like when we're finished. Next slide, please. Uh this is what the building will look like when we're finished. You'll see that the area that is the parking lot will be the new entrance to the to the building when we're done. Next slide, please. This is what the first floor, the plan for the first floor, which will be the behavioral health, integrative health services area. You'll see it will provide modern facilities for a number of existing patients and new ones. Next slide, please. This is the second floor, which will be the workforce training center and will provide some community access facilities uh in addition to the workforce training facility. Next slide, please. Uh this is another side of what you'll see from the corner when the building is done. Next slide, please. Uh one of the features that we're going to add is a rooftop facility. There will be a new elevator core added and this rooftop facility will provide wellness and realization for uh the patients and for the workforce people. Uh it will also provide community events, uh health and wellness workshops and outdoor coworking. We're pretty excited about what this will be when it's done. Next slide, please. Uh you can skip that next slide, please. Uh in order to completely renovate the building, we're going to tear down uh everything that's inside the building, the lead paint, the mold. Everything will be removed there. We will retain all of the walls of the building. Uh we will add the elevator core, it will be effectively four new buildings when we're done, considering the three wings of the existing building and the new elevator core. The bottom photo just shows you where we will be retaining those walls. Next slide, please. Uh this is the schedule. Uh pre-construction has already started, the due diligence phase has been completed. Uh the pre-construction design has started, schematic design drawings will be available starting this week. Uh B W C Consulting has been working on the financing and the loan closing. Uh financing is working, is underway and the request for the grant of five hundred thousand dollars from council is an important part of that. Uh we start construction in July and expect to have the building completed and occupied in August of twenty-sixth. Next slide, please. Another side of the entrance will be thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty usable square feet in the vicinity. This is the a broad view of the budget sources and uses. total construction cost will be approximately fourteen million dollars. Of that fourteen million dollars, we're asking the city to support us with six percent of that amount. Next slide, please. Uh one of the things that we are suggesting the council consider as an advantage to the request we're proposing is that this is what we're proposing is the health and wellness corridor that will be a combination of the development of Rocky Mountain, city city of Rocky Mountain and Heston County, starting with the Unity College uh on one end with the building, Rose Street in the middle. The event center where O I C has a modern facility, it will create the opportunity for health and wellness um operations to be developed along this and to contribute and invite people to come into Rocky Mountain to for health uh opportunities. Next slide, please. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I thank you for your attention and for the opportunity to be here and present to you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Holt, for providing us that presentation. Is there a member of council who has a question? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Councilman Tom, I'm sorry, I didn't see you on the new technology.
Mr. Holt, it's good to see you again. We certainly enjoyed having you at the committee of the whole session last month and uh just a couple of questions, because I'm intrigued about the financing due to my background before I retired. But I'm glad when you were with us last month, you mentioned twenty-five new jobs and now it's up to forty-five. So that's that's great. If I recall, you there was mention of twenty-five new jobs. But uh my question is, phase one of the new market tax credits and there's reference in the information here, that total new market tax credits are twenty-five million. Can you explain about that uh for us?
I can. That is the goal that we have to try to raise that much money. In light of the present economic circumstances, we've adjusted our budget and our expectation to something that reflects the reality of the times. Uh we're still seeking that amount of money, but given the economic times, we will be happy to close on our twenty million and complete this project in accordance with the budget that we've presented to you.
So seven point six million is phase is for the construction phase, is that correct?
Well, sir, new market tax credit financing, as you probably know, involves more than just the construction and design cost. The total cost of the project will be in excess of about twenty million dollars. The construction cost, as I said, is about fourteen, based upon what I put on the screen.
Well, I ask that because some citizens might might would like to benefit from that information, which I've benefited from. So uh um and I'm glad to see for the public is that the five hundred thousand dollar grant that we are going to be voting on shortly, that um five hundred thousand will be be dispersed over a period of time and with valid receipts to the city, the first one hundred thousand would be at fifty percent construction and then progress on from there. So um uh it's good to see this behavior science, behavior health is certainly a big issue facing the country today and not just Rocky Mountain and uh I look forward to the vote.
Well, I thank you. And as was the case with the Rocky Mountain Events Center, all funds are accounted for in great detail, monthly. You'll recall that that project was considerably larger than this one and we had no accounting or reporting issues at all. And as you recall, I handled one project from beginning to end.
I was not on the council during that time, so this is my first instance of new market tax credit, so um I'm glad to see it.
I look forward to working with you on this.
Same here, thank you so much. And again, welcome back again to Rocky Mountain.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Mr. Mayor?
Any other member of council, any questions? Mr. Holt, thank you, that's very informative, really appreciate you taking the time and answering the questions and I think it's beneficial to all here and all that will uh hopefully read about it soon.
Thank you, always happy to be here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir. At this time, I'll receive a motion to approve downtown major incentive investment award for five hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion and and yeah, is there a motion?
No movement.
Motion made by Councilman Javaris Walker, seconded by Councilman Richard Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? And by the way, that motion, I I think I need to ask you to end it to include authorization authorization for mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement and uh memorandum on behalf of the city. Is there a need for discussion? Here it now, all favor. Yes, sir, Councilman Doltrich.
Um just want to make clear to everyone that this this grant is no different than what we recently set up past year or two, I lose track of time. And and as Councilman Harris just articulated, there there are uh parts of this grant that have to be met for the fifty percent and sixty percent and there has to be there has to be um approved with receipts and so forth. And I say that mainly for the public because there's been some some questions um and understandably so uh with any money that is expended within the city of Rocky Mountain. But this is no different, I think we've done two or three grants similar to this. And so um I I just want to make everybody, you know, make sure that people hear that and I do appreciate Councilman Harris also pointing that out. So um I just wanted to make that clear.
So thank you, Councilman Doltrich. I have a motion, second, is there a need for further discussion? Yes, sir, Councilman. I thought you gave me to reach down to hit the button, okay. Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like aye. All right, item uh passes. Item ten is consideration of the recommendations from the planning board meeting, which was held on March eleventh of twenty twenty-five to acknowledge the receipt of those planning board minutes. Uh this time, I think we'll ask somebody from staff, yes, if you could come, give us an overview. Then I will open up the podium with other comment. Just to be clear, this is a request by James Hillbron to rezonate property having an area of approximately five point zero one five acres on Glory Drive uh from R ten to R six MFA.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'm Joseph Bochuk, Director of Development Services here with the city of Rocky Mountain. Uh the request is to rezone a presently undeveloped five-acre portion of a roughly thirty-two-acre parcel located on Glory Drive, which is just off of uh Dreamer Street near Meadowbrook Road. Um comprehensive plan identifies the site as a planned infield growth area and the request aligns with goal within the plan to encourage new residential development adjacent to existing residential develop uh neighborhoods. Uh the proposed rezoning to multifamily residential is consistent with existing development within the immediate area and will create additional housing opportunities at a density not currently permitted within the uh R ten zoning district. The property immediately adjacent to the north was rezoned in twenty twenty-one from R ten to R six MFA also. Uh subsequently, East Haven Apartments, uh which contain around sixty-four dwelling units were developed and open last year, twenty twenty-four. which contain around 64 dwelling units, were developed and opened last year, 2024. The applicant for this request just so happens to be the same developer for that, that property. The Development Review Committee and the planning board have recommended approval on the basis that this zoning map amendment can be considered consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And I believe the applicant is present with us this evening as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bochuk. Do you have any questions for Mr. Bochuk on this matter? Apparently, you get the night off.
I appreciate it.
This time, I'll open the floor to any member of the public who cares to come and speak on this particular matter.
Mayor, members of council, thank you for your consideration tonight. My name is Ted Hilebron. I'm a part of the development team for the East Haven Apartments project that was built when they were zoning in 2021 and whom we opened last year. That project, all 64 units leased up within months of opening the facility. It speaks to, we all know to be a significant need for affordable housing across the city, in particular in eastern Rocky Mountain. This next phase of our development will be 56 units of affordable housing. We have an open application currently with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. We'll be pending tonight's hopeful approvals, submitting a full application to them for a 9% loan of housing tax credit award next month. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Is anybody, a member of the public who wishes to speak to the rezoning request from R 10 to R 6 MFA at Glory Drive? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance. Hello? By Councilman Knight, second by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a need for further discussion? Hearing none on there, with the aye. All opposed, like aye. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Blackwell.
I'm not used to being silent, so I miss my cue. I'm mistaken.
Well, I mean.
I just want to appreciate all the individuals who have supported O I C, both in deed and in word tonight. I want to appreciate a great staff that works hard to make sure that we continue to remain relevant. And I want to appreciate the city council for supporting our efforts. And of course, we're going to turn in our seats. Follow me up there. That's how we roll. Thank you so much to the professional team that's assembled here tonight. And thank you for believing in us and supporting us. And we hope that we'll make a difference. Thank you, Ms. Davis. We know you and Ms. Superior Cole down the street, so we're going to make sure we do you proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell. I'll, I'll, uh, bribe the Councilman Knight for the floor.
I echo the same, but I also want to speak to the gentleman representing East Haven. That project, and our board, is a beautiful project. And so we're just excited about the next phase, and we'd like to see you do more in our city and all of ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. But then I'll move on to item number 11 on the agenda, which is a public hearing and explanation of feasibility study relative to annexation number 337 for 19.14 acres located along Old Carriage Road. It'll be Ward, in Ward 5 if it's approved. Mr. Bochuk?
Hello again. So the proposed contiguous annexation is for a currently undeveloped approximately 19 acre portion of a single parcel on North Old Carriage Road. Water and sewer service are available to the site, and all city services can be provided without significant impact. It's estimated the annexation will generate an annual revenue surplus via taxes and service fees. Recognizing the requested areas satisfy statutory requirements for petition annexation and will not burden the provision of services to recommend that the annexation request be approved.
Any questions for Mr. Bochuk? Okay. So we'll acknowledge the receipt of feasibility study. And I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance extending the corporate limits.
So moved.
Seconded by Councilman Doltrich, seconded by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Yes, Councilman Doltrich.
The, the only thing I'd like to add is I just wish we'd add the other 336 plus acres to this annexation.
I think we could probably add that to future attendance.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I've got a motion and I've got a second. Here, no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like aye. That brings us to item number 12 of the agenda, which is consideration of the grant project work since appropriating 2023 to 2025 state by annual budget allocation for the following activities, $2.5 million for restoring and increasing housing supply, and $4.5 million for Phase 1 development of the new Rocky Mountain traditional center campus. Our request is that we adopt this project ordinance. And at this time, I will receive a motion.
So moved.
Councilman Knight, second motion. Councilman Joyner made a motion, seconded by Councilman Javaris Walker. Okay. All right, is there a need for further discussion? All in favor of them, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Okay, so item 13 is consideration of resolution to support House Bill 332. Is, I don't know if anybody needs to prime around that, but I'm just here to explain 332.
Oh, no.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Got to push the button. House Bill 332 involves the occupancy tax. The, the levy on room occupancy tax of 5% of the cost of the room, 3% of the proceeds from 3% go to Nash County. The proceeds from 2% come to the city of Rocky Mountain. What this bill would do as proposed would be to have those funds come directly to the city without having to make a request to the Nash County Tourism Development Authority, as it is now, or as it has been anyway. The, the city has to make its request for that funding, that 2% funding before the, the T D A. But this, this bill would change that.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Is there a motion to accept, to, I guess, pass a resolution to support House Bill 332?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Councilman Knight. Is there a need for further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Doltrich.
Um, do we know within Nash County the percentage of the occupancy tax that is garnered out of the city of Rocky Mountain that goes to the entire county?
I can't answer for sure, but it's my understanding that 100% of the hotel rooms actually. Sorry, go ahead. Yes, okay.
Currently, all the hotels that pay occupancy tax are located within the city limits of Rocky Mountain. And Nash County does receive 3.5 cents that they have for their purposes.
Right. And so now a comment. I think, I think we need, we, the city of Rocky Mountain and the citizens of Nash County need to recognize that, that occupancy tax is all derived out of the city of Rocky Mountain. And while we recognize that, that the county, this came through when the bill was written, it was certainly written for the county would disperse these funds. So, but I just want, there's a lot of, a lot of talk around this. And there's also a lot of talk about Rocky Mountain. Some good, not so, so, so good. But this is a good thing that helps out the entire county of Nash County. If it were me, if I had to, to do this, I would have said we'd get rid of legislation and we asked the legislators to allow the city of Rocky Mountain to have our own occupancy tax. And hopefully, one day, we can do that. So that way, we can control everything. But as it is now, that may or may not happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Knight, if you wish to be recognized?
No.
Okay. Councilman Blackwell, if you care to recognize?
Thank you. Thank you so much. You did that so smoothly. I, I echo my sentiments to, to support Councilman Doltrich's findings. It is past time that Rocky Mountain gets our due respect and our due revenue for what we do to build the success of this entire region. And whoever is doing the talking, the facts remain that the city of Rocky Mountain is the economic engine for both Nash County and Edgecombe County. The facts state that. It's time that, for us to get the money so that we can continue to build the resources and the infrastructure that we need so that we can be a successful region. I don't know any community in any place in this state that works against itself the way some folks work against the city of Rocky Mountain. And when we do things that other people don't even dare to dream about doing, and not only do them, we succeed at. There are folks who don't want to put one dime in the event center because it's in Edgecombe County. But every family that comes across the United States, across the region to stay overnight, those 6,000 people who come every single weekend all stay in Nash County because there are no hotels in Edgecombe County. So why would you not want us to get more money so that we can do more things to help you create more wealth? That's my commentary. Thank you, Representative Chester, for being courageous and bold and stepping out and supporting a united city council and getting our money so that we can increase opportunities for growth throughout all of the 20,000's region.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Knight, you wish to be recognized?
Yes, if we could get the information in or either, Peter, if we can give our citizens the, the actual percentage base of tax dollars that comes from the city of Rocky Mountain, both counties. You see what it is for a hotel, I can just see. But it's much, much more when you look at the taxes that comes from within the city of Rocky Mountain and the citizens, the health funds, both counties.
Do you have that, Mr. Hunter? Do you have a?
So the challenge we've had is that for the last 15 years, the state of North Carolina does not track tax receipts on the basis of municipality. That was something they did up to around 2010, if I remember correctly. We believe, and we believe it is consistent and remains consistent to then, that when it comes to collections, it is approximately about 60 to 65% of all collections. It might be even a little more, given what we've seen with commercial development in the last couple of years. That is, that is based in the city of Rocky Mountain and based on the distribution formulas and redistributed. City holds profit, but it's different. So that, a share of that money is redistributed outside the city as well as to the counties.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? We'll have a motion, I have a second, is support House Bill 332. Is there any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. You have a miss vote, we'll underscore that. Item 14 is consideration of rescheduling the city council meeting scheduled for Monday, May 26th, 2025, which is Memorial Day of 4 to Tuesday, May 27th, 4:00 P. M., relative to the Memorial Day holiday. Is there a motion to approve rescheduling of the meeting?
So moved.
Seconded by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Those weak guys.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, Councilman DeWalker.
Hit the wrong button. But I would like to make a motion. I don't know if we, have we already voted?
We voted on the reconsideration of the Memorial Day meeting. I think we have.
Okay, that's, classic. I wanted to make them, I wanted to amend the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that we move it to, what was that? That we just move that meeting to our next meeting?
All right, well.
Was that the?
What was the procedure for that, Mr. Attorney? Was it councilor? I wouldn't, I wouldn't hurt my feelings, but.
We, we just rescheduled the meeting if we want to reschedule it again.
Yeah.
That's an option.
So there's a motion to reschedule the now May 20th meeting to June? If I have an idea?
June 9th.
June 9th. I've got a motion, is there a second out there?
Or you're essentially just postponing the?
Well, we are, but we've already passed the rescheduling, so we've got to reschedule it again, so. All right. It's not for my reality show. You got a second? All right. Any need for discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Okay. So the Memorial Day meeting has been rescheduled, rescheduled to June 9th.
Thank you.
All right. Brings us to item 15, which is library board reappointment. There's currently one seat for reappointment appointment on the library board. Ms. Anderson is currently serving on the library board, wishes to be reappointed. Her attendance has been consistent. This panel has also submitted a personal history form request to be replaced on library board. You have received a flood of requests for reappointment and the appointment, council consideration. Is there a motion to either appoint or reappoint?
Reappoint, there is.
I have a motion to reappoint, this is Ms. Anderson.
Second.
Where was the second? I heard a bunch of them, okay. Councilman Doltrich, is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Okay. Brings us to item 16, which is personnel matter. At this time, I will, it's a little unusual, but I'll turn the floor over to Councilman Blackwell to make a motion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And I'll do so without my speech and without my, um. I'd like to make a motion to appoint a young man who has served Rocky Mountain diligently for six years and supported quietly, moving and operating while others did what they needed to do sometimes, and sometimes they didn't. They didn't change what he did. I'd like to nominate an individual who was a family man, who was a community member, who's made investment in the city of Rocky Mountain, in his home, with his family, and with his heart. I'd like to nominate Elton Daniels as Rocky Mountain's next city manager, effective tonight after this meeting is over.
Look, if it will. So passes, I think we'll be doing a swearing in.
A swearing in, okay.
Swearing in, and then I think we'll open up a final comments.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll just, I'll just.
So you say some of the speeches prior to that.
Yeah, I'll say my speeches prior to that.
Right.
But I'd like to nominate Elton Daniels, enthusiastic nominee, Elton Daniels.
Exactly.
And Richard Joyner has seconded the motion. Before I call a vote or before I call comments, we will give everybody an opportunity to make final comments at the conclusion of the, of the meeting. But I want to thank Peter for all the work he has done in the interim here of holding and being the glue to enable this moment here tonight. Also, I would acknowledge the family of Mr. Daniel and the number of dignitaries here. I'm going to miss somebody, but I do see our councilperson from Nash County, Lynn Wilson. I'm sorry, Wilkins, I mean Commissioner, here in the audience as well. And so just want to thank y'all for that. Is there a need for discussion on this particular matter?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Doltrich.
Before we do that, I, I would like for us to all stand up and recognize Peter Barney for the hard work he's done for the city of Rocky Mountain.
Okay, with that, I will call the vote. All in favor of Elton Daniel being appointed as our Rock Mountain city manager, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Congratulations, Mr. Daniel. But how are you going to do it? Just repeat it.
Uh-uh, no. Not even, no, thanks this way. I didn't know, Mr. Mayor.
Aye, Elton Daniels.
Aye, Elton Daniels.
You solemnly swear that I will support and maintain
You solemnly swear that I will support and maintain
Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina.
I'll be consistent, where is it?
I am consistent, where is it?
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as city manager for the city of Rocky Mountain. So help me God. Faithfully discharge my duties as city manager.
That I will faithfully discharge, uh, discharge my duties as city man, city manager.
For the city of Rocky Mountain.
For the city of Rocky Mountain.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Strive and swear to the main, the fourteenth day of April of twenty twenty-five. Congratulations, Mr. Daniel.
Family, you want to bring your family.
Yeah, yeah. My mom, my parents.
I have a magnet.
Okay, this time I, uh, I will open up the floor for any member of council who wishes to, uh, provide some final comments tonight. Yes, sir. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would like to echo sentiments of, I think, each of you to say, uh, job well done. And thank you to, uh, our interim manager, Mr. Peter Barney, for the work that he stepped into, continues to do to keep us afloat every time we call. And I know as a council, we will be doing something, uh, special for him in the weeks to come, uh, and he'll still be around. Uh, we like to call him the old born, old ran in the barn, but, uh, there's nothing hold about Mr. Barney at all. He's the only person I know that works seven days a week, uh, three hundred and sixty-six days of the week, sun down. If you're up, I see, oh, you want to see his car parked out there in the parking lot. So, uh, Mr. Barney, thank you. And to our now, uh, manager, Mr. Elton Daniels. Uh, thank you. It's been a long time coming. Uh, thank you for not getting weary in your well doing uh, and for walking into your new season. Now, we're looking forward to what we can do as a city. Uh, I think we all believe unanimously that you have what it takes to take us to the next level. Uh, if not, it would not have been a unanimous vote. So, uh, we're looking forward to the days to come. Uh, thankful and grateful for this beautiful moment we have at the city of Rocky Mountain. And, uh, again, thank you, thank you, thank you to your family that took time off to come. And, uh, looking forward to working with you again. Congratulations and thank you.
Yes, uh, see. Well, see, now technology's working against all these folks in the youth. All right, uh, Councilman Joyner, I believe, is, uh, yeah. This feels a little bit like a name that tune. You know, you're the first, Councilman Joyner.
Certainly want to thank Mr. Peter Barney and thank Lynn, his beautiful wife, that always says she will allow us to have him one more time, but she said, this is it. Thank you so much. And to Elton and his beautiful family and, um, to his father and mother that I met many, many years ago with their roommate, William Davis, their cousin, uh, that send his love tonight. And, uh, they always said that she raised a young man of excellence and the family did. And certainly, Elton, it's been a privilege to work with you and to now see that you have moved to our manager. Thank you, Peter, that I know that the goal for you guys is going to lead us to even more greatness, and we look forward to the journey.
Thank you, Councilman Joyner. This time I'll recognize, uh, Councilman Daltridge.
Well.
Please, uh, no, this is Councilman Jabaros Walker. We can, we can, I'll figure this out. I'm sorry, Elton. Everybody's gonna get a chance to speak, guys. So that's a good thing. Councilman Jabaros Walker. You have the floor.
Like everybody said, uh, Mr. Barney, I want to thank you for, you know, uh, they had a movie called Saving Ryan. And if we had to call something for Rocky Mountain, we'd call it Mr. Peter coming to save Rocky Mountain. You come back into this, this role and we in a dark place as council and you kind of got us out of it. And I think the last six months as council meetings has been a joy to come to. We've been working together. We've been clicking, and I think we headed in the right direction. So, Mr. Barney, if I had a million tongs and a million gift cards, I'd send them to your house every day, man. Thank you, and I pray that. I don't know that we'll keep running into a Peter Barney, man. Every day of my life, I'm thankful for you. When I took on this position, you took me in day one. I went to sleep on you. You let me take a nap, you woke me up, and we finished where I left off at. So thank you from my heart and heart. Um, thank you, God, when it take to take us to the next level. They got a saying called sky's the limit, but I, I don't like to use it because every time I fly, I go out the sky. So I want to tell you, take as far as you can take us and make sure that you just do what's on your heart. You the man for the job, man. Congratulations. Anything I can do, you let me know, but I'm proud of you and I'm ready to take this journey with you. My seatbelt's buckled. Let's ride.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Walker. Uh, I'll recognize the Councilman Tom Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, there's not enough thanks to give Mr. Barney for his role of serving twice as interim manager. I don't think there's a citizen in Rocky Mountain who loves to city any greater than Peter Barney. And, Mr. Barney, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Elton, we look forward to having you as our new manager. It takes a team. We all can do it individually, but I have full confidence as, as you, uh, the give traction as city manager that we can have a great team doing what we all aspire to do, make this city the best it can be. And thank you, Elton.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. I'll recognize Councilman, Councilman Daltridge.
Uh, like everyone else, Mr. Barney, I just want to say thank you and I appreciate you and, um, wish you well in, um, your third or fourth or fifth retirement and, um, enjoy that. Uh, Elton, uh, I look forward to working with you. Um, you mentioned the other day, you haven't heard much from me throughout the years, but, um, that's soon to change. You're either gonna love me or you're gonna hate. But I look forward to working with you, Elton. I know you'll do a great job and, um, and like, uh, Councilman Harris just said, you, you've got a, a good team. I know you're gonna build on that and, uh, good things are in store for Rocky Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blackwell?
Um, who said he can retire? I think we just sort of, um, transforming your role, sir. But, uh, what I'm thankful for, um, is a, a man with vision, uh, someone who is well able to do the job and someone ready to take us into our future. Don't we need that? We need that right now. And, um, I'm so excited, uh, that we have somebody who's grounded, who knows how to build consensus and, um, and, and is a hustler. You know, I appreciate the fact that, um, the way you came up was a rough one, sir. And I don't mean that in the home. I'm saying that this guy paid the price in ways that most people don't. You don't know his story, but you can find, spend some time to talk to him. But you're gonna see a work ethic second to none. You see communication that's exemplary. You'll see planning and thoughtfulness go into everything that we do. And we'll see adherence to public policy. I'm looking forward to showing the state of North Carolina greatness that we always operate in. Thank you, Pete. Um, look forward to continuing to work with you. I was trying to figure out where you were. That's how he does, from the front to the back. He says something about who you are. Um, but we always know you got us in your heart. We appreciate you. Thank you so much.
The Councilman Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Ruben, I apologize. I was waiting for Richard to speak, but he had already spoken. That means I'm getting no. Ruben, you're the longest sitting council member, so I'm just gonna leave that for you to do the, the last remarks, but anyway, we've been served for over twenty years and we've seen a lot. We've seen them come and we've seen them go. I just want to say, uh, Elton, you have never been braggadocious about anything that you have done or have accomplished. You never talked about you being the very top in your education about anything that you've done, your war through achievement. You've always been a hard worker. My grandmother always said, God, worst and mysterious ways, the ways to perform. And so we're here as a full council, supporting you as our manager. You brought us through some difficult times behind the scene, but you got the job done along with others in our city staff and Mr. Barney. And so we appreciate it. We appreciate you being steadfast, unmovable, but willing to get your hands dirty and to help us move forward. So again, I just want to thank you. And your parents and your wife, your children, just want to thank your family for sharing you with us. So if you hear a bing bing text message or a phone call, an emergency, maybe one of us. So just be patient with us and thank you. And, Mr. Barney, I got a speech for you when we get you to cookies and ice cream and cake. Thank you, Mr. Barney. I'll be, thank you for all you have done.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Uh, I'm gonna take a moment of executive privilege to just say, uh, Peter has been the absolute pleasure of my life, uh, to be able to serve with you. I appreciate the heart that you have, uh, Stephen Hart, really, as it relates to the city of Rocky Mountain. Your, and not only that, your ongoing commitment to the city of Rocky Mountain and this transition. And I want to thank you so much for the many years of service. Uh, I think we all owe you a great deal of debt and honor. So thank you so much. And, and Elton, what I'll say is that it feels like since I've been mayor my entire role has been negotiating city managers in and out. And I am grateful, I believe, I am, and I, I am grateful to say that I've got somebody I think can take me in. I, I'll say this, I'm here to support you in any way that I possibly can. Uh, I appreciate you taking on this challenge. I appreciate you taking on the mantle of a, a role and, uh, wish you much love in the future. Again, stand behind you in everything that I could possibly do to help you advance in the city of Rocky Mountain. So with that, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting tonight.